Welcome to Athens City Council. Today is Monday, February 23rd, 2015. We will begin this evening's very busy schedule first with committee meetings, beginning with planning and development.
Thank you. We have a fairly short agenda tonight. With us tonight is Mary Nally, who is the Community Foods Initiatives Director, and she's going to give us a presentation. This happens yearly with them, and they're going to let us know what's going on and plans for the future. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me. So I know you have a busy schedule, so I'm going to keep this concise. And first of all, just to let you know that I'm just reporting on the impact we had in 2014 and our plans for 2015. Normally when I come and see you at this time of year, we're also talking money. I haven't had a chance to meet with the mayor yet, so we'll do that later. So for those of you who may not be aware of our organization, we are an organization focused on local food access that provide equitable access to fresh, healthy food for everyone in our community. We really consider that to be the southeastern Ohio region. We've been serving Athens County for 22 years, and we're supported by our community here a great deal, as well as regional and national foundations. Our mission is to make this statement true. A local food system exists that ensures equitable access to fresh, healthy food for everyone, and all of our programs are trying to answer the question, how can we make this true? We identify our local food system, including our local food economy, as a safety net, both in terms of social needs as well as creating economic development. One of our longest-standing programs is our community gardens. We manage six community gardens in Athens County, three of which are in the city of Athens. We provide garden plots, free seeds and plant starts, easy access to tools, and much more. We're very pleased with 2014. Thanks to an Eagle Scout troop, we now have picnic tables at all of our community gardens, and that really helps bring the community together, so people have a place to sit down and enjoy the fruits of their labor. This is a quote from one of our Southside Carriage Hill community gardeners. This is one of the newest gardens we have, and I'll read it for those of you who might not be able to see the screen. "My involvement with the excellent community gardens program in our area has not only given me the opportunity to get fresh air and exercise, flex my problem-solving skills, interact with like-minded people, and enjoy a relaxing respite in a sweet environment, but has also enabled me to give back to my community. As you probably know, we ask all of our gardeners to donate 10% to those in need, whether that be to our donation station program or to friends and neighbors. Along with that goes our workshop series, where adults can come and learn gardening, orchard, and food preservation from hands-on peer experiences. We try to find people in the community, not necessarily experts, but those who have a great deal of experience, and they share their knowledge. We had over 30 workshops in 2014. We've been emphasizing our seed sovereignty work quite a bit lately. We have an inventory that collects the kinds of seeds and contact information for local seed savers to ensure that we're having our food security at the seed level, so that we're having plants that are well-developed to our soil weather conditions, and that's especially important as we are experiencing climate change. We also teach a lot of seed-saving workshops. It can be kind of an intimidating process if you don't know what's involved, but many of them are actually quite simple, so we've been doing a great deal of those. And we did two seed-saving workshops at the Paw Paw Festival last year, and that was quite fun. We've also been working on creating a stronger network of seed savers through this, through just naming them. So we're calling them the Southeast Ohio Seed Savers, and we're working towards starting a micro-regional seed company, so that there's also an economic incentive involved in seed saving. We also are, have been doing community orchards for a good number of years. This started out with Lori Gromen just identifying where there were fruit and nut trees on public property, so that people could identify them, harvest their fruits, and appreciate them in a new way. But we also were lucky last year to partner with an OU, Ohio University student who wrote a grant to the National Wildlife Federation, and this allowed us to plant a small community orchard at Highland Park. Here listed are the kinds of fruit and fruit trees and berry bushes, including pawpaw, some different apple trees, pear, and the berry bushes are honeyberry, josterberry, and goji berry. That was very nice, because we had neighborhood involvement in that, and a lot of volunteers come out. So we're glad that that happened successfully. We also distribute a great number of seeds to ensure that not having seeds is not the barrier. We distributed 35,000 pounds of seed potatoes. If all those potatoes grew to fruition, that's 350,000 pounds of potatoes. We're aiming for 45,000 this year. That's basically a semi-truck full of potatoes. We're sitting on them, that's why. You can see in the picture. Over 3,000 seed packets of 400 varieties and 4,000 plant starts. That's thanks to many people, including the Athens Master Gardeners Club. Our school gardens are now in every single school in Athens County, all districts, I should say, and we've been going into the classrooms and working with teachers as well. We've facilitated over 130 lessons, reaching 1,200 young people, and we just recently had a school garden season creation workshop in partnership with Green Edge Organic Farms, and that was very successful as well. This is a quote from another person who works with our school gardens, because we don't just work in the school district, where we will work with any youth organization that wants to use gardening as an aspect of their practices. And so we work with Athens County Children's Services, and they use this in their family visitation unit. And I'll read this quote from Autumn Seltzer. She's the AmeriCorps service member working at the Athens County Services. And she says, "Families go out to the garden and harvest cucumbers to snack on during the visit. Children pick flowers to give to their mothers. Children ask me all about the different herbs and vegetables, curious about how they grew. Kids who have never tried these vegetables become so excited to take part of the process growing them, from seed to table." And, you know, there's a lot of difficult things that happen at children's services, and so it's very nice that they've been working with this garden for quite a long time. So we built new raised beds out there in 2014 with them. We also continue, of course, our Yeah Kids program. These are the youth entrepreneurs at Hope. This is a program where we work with low-income kids to have their own production garden, teach them entrepreneurial skills, and then they vend at the Athens Farmers Market. They're the youngest vendors at the market, and their farm is the closest. They made over $1,000 in profits, and all of those go directly to the kids. They keep a timesheet. We work their hours out, and they get paid for all the work they do, and it has a really significant impact. So we're very pleased that this program has continued and that we've had many families continue throughout the years we've had this program. And so it has, you know, there aren't that many children involved in it, because it's a small community out there, but the impact, I believe, is very, very deep. And then, of course, there is our donation station program. This is the program that's focused on immediate access to healthy food for those in need. And instead of putting a bunch of words up here, we've got images showing our Harvest Hotline that will go out to area farms and harvest. We're also at the Athens Farmers Market and Chester Hill Produce Auction, and then we hold distribution twice during peak season, and these show some of the food pantry coordinators distributing that food to those in need all around the region. We've been compiling numbers, looking back since when we started this program in 2008, and up to December in 2014, we had distributed in total 338,526 pounds of food, and almost 80,000 of those were just from last year. Our original goal for last year was 55,000. I've learned that I'm underestimating what we can do. So we're very, very pleased and have also been able to expand into Morgan County in 2014, and we just had our first pickup to Vinton County this morning from a food pantry there. So we're really, really excited about that. And we're also excited, because as I said, we're not just getting food to those in need, but we're helping build the local food economy. Since 2012, we've spent over $38,000 in the local food economy and $14,000 last year, and we're anticipating a similar number in 2015. The Harvest Hotline is relatively new, but it has definitely increased our numbers, as you can see here. And I'll read this quote from Rick Vest, who, those are his spaghetti squash in that image, and he called us on a very regular basis last year. "The donation station at the Athens Farmers Market may well be one of the most enjoyable parts of attending the market. The staff is always on hand to help farmers with produce they have donated, as well as give a smile and thank you to all who helped to contribute to this organization. They truly create a win-win situation for the farmers, recipients of the produce, and the entire community. Discovery Kitchen is our educational component, so that we go out to the food pantries and teach people what to do with the food once they've received it. It's all well and good to distribute eggplant all over the place, but if people don't know how to cook it, it's not going to go very far. Although, more people know how to cook than what you originally think. We've been impressed. Since we started this program in, or in 2014, we reached over 500 people at 25 venues, so we have a lot of, you know, returning to the same organization to have a deeper impact, and it definitely is. This person is quoted as, you know, saying that she's learned that eating beans can reduce her risk of type 2 diabetes, and she feels like the recipes she's receiving in this program are those that she can use with her family. So we're breaking down those barriers. Of course, we're a really small organization. We now have two full-time staff, which is the first time in a long time, and three AmeriCorps members, but really, the bulk of the work happens because of volunteers from our community. In 2014, we had 376 of them, and we figured out that that means we had 180 extra eight-hour workdays. So we really depend on that a lot and are very grateful for it. This demonstrates our income sources, so about half of our funding is from grants, and the other half is raised from this community, the memberships, the fundraising, the workshop fees, and sales locally. So it's a really nice balance. And specific contributions that, I believe, are very impactful to the city of Athens. The majority of donation station food is still going to this community, although those food pantries may serve outerlying areas. The three thriving community gardens, including the Westside Community Garden, which we've been in partnership quite a bit, talking about some of their fruit trees down there that were damaged during last winter. We're in all of the elementary schools in Athens City School District. We're going to be in, at the Westside Community, or the Westside Elementary, whether or not the building will be there or not. We're going to figure out a way to make that happen. And then, of course, the community orchards that are maintained by a council of volunteers. So I think I've mentioned most of these, but in 2015, we're looking forward to expanding our programs with some grants, in particular from the Osteopathic Heritage Foundation and Grow Appalachia, are allowing us to expand our donation station and community garden work into Vinton and Morgan Counties. We're hoping to replicate the donation station in other communities as a way both to derive income and also to, you know, make this program more widely available, because it has a lot of benefits to sustain itself through, in the community. We'll also be hosting more school garden workshops that offer teachers continuing education units, so that they have an extra incentive to come. And I think that is it. So thank you very much for your time.
Great.
I ran through that very quickly.
Thank you. Want to open it up for discussion or questions?
I have to thank you and all of CFI, all the staff, all the AmeriCorps workers, everybody that you've got. You know, CFI, to me, is one of the gems in this city for what you do in terms of training, teaching sustainability, land stewardship. I've seen a number of the gardens. Yeah is one of my favorite groups. I still want to challenge you, or not challenge you, but ask you to start a friendly rivalry between the Southside Garden and, and Hope. And I kind of want to put things in perspective for everyone who think about this. You know, 3,000, or 300,000, 336, 38,000 pounds, sounds like a lot. That's 165 tons of food.
Yeah.
That has been moving through, my quick math anyway. That's what I come up with, which, that's staggering. And it just, it goes to show how much the city, you know, strives to take care of its own and worked to provide for others, not just the city, the county. So that said, my hat's off to you and to all your staff.
Thank you. Questions? Comments? Administration?
Just thank you for all your efforts in making this more of a community, sustainable community.
Well, it's great to look out at the city council and know that I've got volunteers sitting up there, people who have donated and people who, you know, contribute on a regular basis in partnership in many ways, so that's what community means. Thank you.
And we'll look forward to when you come back and establish what we usually give to the CFI through.
Thank you, Chris.
We will see you again, I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the end of my committee for this evening. No miscellaneous.
Thank you, Councilmember Paul. Moving on to City Services Committee, and I believe this is my council member at large.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can I, we have another presentation. Rose Troyer is going to come up and talk to us about it. Another, it's such a great segue, another perfect community engagement event in which the city, as well as the university, our entire community, comes together to work towards the beautification of our city, city parks, city right-of-way, city, city. Thank you, Rose.
Yeah, thank you guys for having me. I'll try to be quick, too. So Athens Beautification Day this year is going to be on April 19th. So this is just all the things we're going to talk about today. This is last year's logo. It was submitted by Erica Stoybul. So we did have a photo contest this year, and this ended up being the winner. So this is college green, and it's going to be, they're going to be on maroon shirts, and it's going to be in white. And it was done by Selena Snyder. She's actually here, and she's a part of the Community Service Leadership Council, which is where Athens Beautification Days move to now for this year, and then hopefully for the foreseeable future. So just to take you guys back to the beginning, it was started in 2005, so this is the 11th year of Beautification Day, and it was started by the OU Men's Water Polo Team. So there were only nine projects, 150 volunteers, 17 city sponsors, so we're really excited that we've been able to continue this, and hopefully it'll be lasting even after, like, I don't know, hopefully forever. So these are the progresses that we've made from the beginning and up to last year. So last year, we had 1,015 volunteers show up day of, and this year, we're hoping to reach 1,300 volunteers. We're getting more projects, so hopefully we'll be to reach that goal, because we're going to have over 50 projects lined up, have some new ones, and we're teaming up with both the, the Cardboard City and then the Watershed program this year as well. So again, this is the date and time and location. So it's April 19th. Registration will begin on college green about 11:11 AM, or, yeah, still in the morning. And then the speakers are starting at 12, so 12:30, 1 o'clock is when the projects will begin, and then they're going to go until 4:00. And then we're going to have Kaiser's on college green, and we're still looking at booking music. And we're also, we're having the, both the pulled pork and the tofu from Kaiser's, which I'm really excited about, really wanted to try their tofu, so I'm looking forward to the 19th for that. So these are some of, just examples of the projects that we did last year, so, and we're going to do repeats of a lot of them this year, too. So the Wayne National Forest, we do have four O dot highway cleanups now. We haven't specified the exact highways that we're cleaning up this year, but we're going to narrow that down, the bike paths, streets, and the college greens as well. And then, so if anyone here wants to sign up, or anyone wants to get their, you know, their families to sign up, it's abday2015 eventbrite.com. And then, this just runs you through how to sign up. So you click the register button, and you put in your information, your email address, and you select what organization you're with, and you fill it out. And then, so again, this is what's new for 2015. So again, it is the first year for the Community Service Leadership Council, which is an organization on campus, and there's also the formation of five committees. So we have the sponsorship committee, the budget committee, the organizational outreach committee, the city planning committee, just, and it's helped to narrow down, like, because it's turning into a larger event, so it's helped build it up within the organization as well. And then, so this is a rough outline of the budget for the day of. So we get t-shirts every year, and they're 50% recycled materials, so right now, our best price at that was $3.60 a piece, and that hasn't been covered yet, so we're still looking to build up some more sponsorships. And then, we're going to, we had $500 of the transportation covered by the SCORE grant from this Community Service Leadership Council from Ohio Women, and so the extra mileage is like where we are going to need some more, so that just, that's going to depend, we'll know more after the day, so how far each of the vans go. But it's 46 cents per mile, and, but we did get the food covered in full by U-Fund from Ohio University, and then supplies have not entirely been determined, but we do have a lot of the supplies as far as brooms and dust pans, like, all of those things we kept within the city, so we have a lot of those to be reused. So currently, we've gotten 4,000, and we're still raising the 3,600-plus mileage and then extra supplies that we haven't heard about yet. And then also, so if you guys, again, it's abday2015 eventbrite.com, and anyone can sign up. We also have the opportunity to hang banners on the registration tables if anybody within the community wants to have an extra sponsorship opportunity there. So this, these are the levels for both city and student orgs, so just because we're fundraising more and more money each year, we did make it lower for the student orgs than with the cities, just because we know that they have less money. So these are the levels, and that, the levels are decided by what size logo goes on the back of the t-shirt. And then, so do you guys have any questions?
I just want to thank you, Rose. We've worked together for several years, the Keep Athens Clean and Beautiful Committee you've always partnered with, and we've worked really closely together, and this is right after Number Fest and International Street Fair. It's the next day. So I hope the volunteers sign up, and, because we know we need a huge cleanup effort.
Yeah.
After those events, so we really appreciate that. And, and I know also this year, there's a big group going to be working on graffiti removal, which we were quite successful at last year, and that was very helpful. So I really appreciate all your efforts in leading us to keep moving forward and leading us in the right direction.
Thank you.
I think the city, again, will, will provide mulch and taking mulch out to different areas. Is that correct?
And we're also, I think, considering, as we have in the past, the financial support.
Yeah, typically $1,000 in the past, and I'm sure we'll be appropriating again. I, too, want to thank you for all your work, and I want to throw down the gauntlet and challenge everyone in the city to come out and pitch in. It's a fun time to intermingle with university administration, city government, city workers, and so it's a good time to be had by all. It's fun.
I think Mayor Heather, another comment.
Just one other comment, but I think that on the same day of Beautification Day, there are these seedlings that have been planted, one of the teams on the Northwest Bike Path Spur.
So it's a nice combination of collaborating with the university, and I really hope that as many city council members are in town as possible can take part in this. It's a great opportunity and a real nice fix thing and doing lots for the community.
We'll be there.
Any other questions? All right, thank you guys so much.
Thank you, Rose. The only other item that I have tonight is, there is a, it's a request for qualifications that the city has been working on, which will be going forward. That request for qualification is for the solid waste recycling collection and processing services. Basically, it's looking at having the MRF come into play, which, in talking with Athens Hocking Recycling Center, they're hoping to have something underway like July 1st. But anyway, this is an RFQ. There's other organizations, obviously other agencies out there, so it's open to everyone who wants to submit for this RFQ. Should we say anything, Greg, or anything I'm missing on that?
Just that this is our first step, and then we'll be coming forward, requesting legislation to go ahead and enter into contracts, because our extended one-year contract expires at the end of June, so we're staying ahead of it and on top of it. Yes, we're requesting single-stream service.
Great.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Patterson. Moving on to Transportation Committee, which is chaired this evening by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. Our first agenda item is the Columbus Road Bike Path Spur. We are trying to get all our ducks in a row to begin the construction. We need an easement. Many of you may recall that we had to go through this when we were doing the Richland Avenue project, and it seems that we run into little difficulties with corporations. The Laurel's, we need to cross the Laurel's property, which is down off Columbus Circle. And as far as we know, our engineering staff has been working with those people, meetings they've had, but we have not come to a conclusion at this time. So we are going to put legislation forward to take this by eminent domain. Administration, do you have anything you want to add to that?
We're, you know, we're still hopeful we can reach an agreement, but we're right up against the time, and we've waited, and so we want to move forward with this, and if we need to appropriate, we will. We don't, we won't.
Any questions from council? It's, it's a pretty straightforward piece of legislation, but in order to keep everything on our timeline, if you recall, we're right up against the, the backside of the grant in order to spend the money, and if we don't get everything lined up here, we're going to lose that grant money.
It's unfortunate that some corporations would not want to cooperate, and we've cooperated and passed with writing grants to help develop some of the area down there, and I would think that it would be nice if it was reciprocal. Kind of disappointing.
I kind of tend to agree with Councilwoman Law. I'd rather kind of talk and give them the, and have to go to that next step.
We've tried, and again, we're still in discussion, and with this particular piece of property, there was a sewer easement that was abandoning an old one and then installing the new one, and we were able to reach an agreement on the sanitary sewer agreement, but we are, we're out of town.
And they should understand that. I mean.
We've been talking about it for months, and I believe there was a change in hands, possibly of the property, or something changed, possibly, we're not sure, but there's been a lot of discussion.
One thing that's not on the agenda that we add is that we are bringing back up to life 83 Columbus Road and what the, some future possibilities of use aligned with this project will be, so that'll be coming forward here in the next couple of months.
Okay, so 83 Columbus Road, when you're, what you meant to say, or help us understand, that's property that we own, but we're looking to improve that piece of property.
Yes.
And that will also go into the somewhat of the project with the, I mean, it's a separate project, but it will enhance the bike path spur there.
That's still the concept that's out there. We'll be bringing that forward.
I did want to bring up one other thing under miscellaneous, the International Street Fair. We've had some discussions in terms of the issues related to one block or two, and there were and there were some conversations about that.
We did have a meeting with, the president and the mayor met, and it was discussed at their meeting. At this point, they, we haven't determined a change in that path. Is this just first reading this evening, or where are we?
I think it is, yes.
So, if there are modifications in the actual closure, I'll be bringing that back.
So, it's still in the planning stages?
Okay.
And did you have anything new to report to us regarding, since we're kind of talking about this specific weekend, we have beautification day on Sunday, the 19th, but on the 18th, we have International Street Fair and the Number Fest. Do you have anything else to add to that in terms of planning or street issues or?
We're still waiting to hear back from the organizers. They were tasked to go to ODOT to seek out a permit for the actual closure of a lane on 56, because it is outside our jurisdiction. It is in the county's jurisdiction, ultimately the sheriff for law enforcement. We all recognize the impacts that happened in the city. They're, seem very willing to try to accommodate the best they can. But there will be a massive party. If we ask the students who are in the audience, how many have Number Fest tickets, I imagine we'd see quite the show of hands. Could we ask that? None of you are going to Number Fest?
There was one here.
So, we will be dealing with the impacts, and they seem very willing to try to appease. It's just how do you move 10, over 10,000 individuals from one location to another?
And, and I have been, I've received a couple emails where concerned citizens, and they remember the impacts over the last couple of years, and businesses, there's, that whole corridor there along Union is, there's a lot of concern. So, even though, that happens to be in the city, but again, reaching out to our businesses and our local folks out that way, I think is gonna be really important. Yes.
Can you give us some sense as to what the lane closure would be on 56, and where would it come in approximation to 682 and Union, because West Union terminates into 56?
They're attempting to rent, lease, or what have you, land closer to the venue for the shuttle. So, that would move the shuttle area out of the fairgrounds. So, they're looking at one lane much closer to the venue there. The venue being Hayes property just outside Stages.
So, beyond 56.
But either way you look at it, will have an impact on the traveling public. And we, we have the Turtle Run subdivision, and those residents here, they hear it all day, early into night. Their hours are still within the hours of like a 1:00 to 10:00 p.m. music event with, since they're going to be outside the city again, they're excited that they can request a fireworks permit. So, seem committed to the trash pickup, seem committed or understand they've got to improve public health sanitary issues out there with more portages, you know, more expansive and what have you, so.
So, they are going to be there until February 5?
Yes. They confirmed that for us unless something changed, unless we could do.
Okay. Any other questions on that? We have one other item. I just wanted to say we will be coming forward at special session to amend ordinance regarding the replacement of the two buses. If you recall, last time we discussed it, we didn't have the final numbers. And now, our total cost, the total cost is 172,803. The city's local share will be 34,561. And if you recall, half cap is the grantee. And so, the 2014 appropriation ordinance, 120-14, will be amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance a sum of $40,803 and increasing the total appropriation by set amount.
Well, before the, before we approve this amendment, will we be able to see the contract? We'll look at the contract, or will they come in and go over the contract with the changes?
Half cap?
Yeah.
I assume they've gone over it with the mayor and the administration.
No, they are not here to present tonight.
They're not here to present, no. What is your, what are, what are you concerned about?
Well, I, I guess my concern is, is that the last time that they bid the buses out, there was how many months late on it? And was there a performance bond put in there, you know, to protect the city from this? That, you know, if there was late on the delivery date, that, you know, you could cash in on the bond?
I, we're actually buying the buses. So, they're our contract entity. They, that, they indicate that it can be a six-month build-out, but I think it got behind last year in terms of that. So, I'm not sure what sureties are needed by the city in order to protect us in terms of that outlay. They haven't even offered to upfront that cost, but it's my understanding that was something that, in terms of financial bookkeeping, that wasn't allowed or what have you in terms of, so, I mean, I'm not sure what you're seeking in terms of sureties.
Who are you concerned with, Mike? Who, what are you concerned?
I suggest if we're expending city money.
Right.
And we have a contract, we're in a contract, or they're under a contract, and we expend our money out, but yet we are at an expected delivery date, but yet we don't get, well, at that date that the delivery time was scheduled to be here. You know, I, I put contracts together. So, that's the reason I'm bringing this up, is that when we put contracts together, we have a performance bond in there.
Right.
And so, by having a performance bond, that keeps the contractor...
On track.
On track, on track. You know, that's one thing, anything we ever do, whether it's street buildings, or whether it's bridge buildings, any type of contract, bike path expansions that we're doing, you know, is that we have a performance bond in there because we have to protect the citizen's interest in it. And that's, that's my, that's the only reason I'm asking that.
What I can attempt to get to is, you know, the current status of the program and our con, our contractor, where we have entered into Hocking Athens Perry Community Action Agency related to transit.
Okay, because I was also on that board, and that's why I also helped implement that in that board. And I was on that.
Interesting. It's up for reading this evening. It was going to be amended. So, I'm not going to be able to have that information at your fingertips this evening.
So, it's a first reading. So, hopefully by the third reading. And we did need to suspend that. So, I think we're, we're fine. We can have that information, hopefully. Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Pappy. Moving on to Finance Personnel Committee, which is chaired by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Mr. President Protem. First item is staffing. Chief Prosecutor is the topic. I'll let the new law director speak to that and tell us what it is you need and what we can do.
Thank you. Many of you may know that on February the 9th, Law Director Pat Lang, former Law Director Pat Lang, became judge. So, that left an opening in the office of the Law Director. And the mayor appointed me acting Law Director on that date. So, that was on February 9th. The Central Committee of the Democratic Party will meet on the 25th on Wednesday, and at that point, I expect to be appointed interim Law Director, and that would be to fill Mr. Lang's unexpired term. I've also filed my petitions to run for the office. But now that I've become Law Director, I'm moving from a position that was Chief City Prosecutor, and in that position, assisting the Law Director in civil matters, but also supervising the other prosecutors. And as you know, we had three positions, and those three positions, then what I'm asking is that we take one of those positions, and we keep it at the same pay range, but we turn it into a Chief City Prosecutor position. There will be additional duties, and those will be duties that I formerly had as Chief City Prosecutor. And some of those include supervising the other city prosecutors and serving as, that person is a liaison to the Law Director, because in the end, the Law Director is really responsible for, by law, for the criminal prosecutions. So, serving as a liaison to me, although I still will be involved in criminal prosecutions. Taking over the responsibilities of the criminal prosecutions for the code office, I did all of those also. And one of them that you may not think about is being the go-to person in the middle of the night when law enforcement calls at 3:00 in the morning and has a legal question. So, those are just a few of the additional duties that the Chief City Prosecutor would hold. And I'm just asking that you consider doing that, creating that position.
So, we'll have to come up with an ordinance to create the position that would go through human resources, and a position that is currently being held by a member of your staff would be upgraded to this new position?
That's right. That's exactly right.
So, there's no new additional personnel coming?
No, and it would be no additional cost.
I believe it's essentially an amendment to the existing staffing ordinance. Does that sound correct, Abby?
Which still requires an ordinance to amend.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions from anybody on the council? Yes?
Forgive me if this is a silly question, but Law Director Eliason, I think, first time I'm saying that. Why is it necessary for us to create a new ordinance when we have someone who's been in the position? Do we not already have something on the books that, that covers this?
That's an interesting question. No, we don't. I assumed that role when Mr. Lang became Law Director, I assumed the role. I've been in, for people who may not know this, I've been in the office probably longer than some of the people here have been alive. I started in 1990 as prosecutor, and I assisted both Law Director Gary Hunter and Law Director Lang. In addition to the criminal prosecutions, I assisted them in legal matters involving the city. So, this has been basically a natural progression. It was never formalized. The position was never formalized. And what I'm asking is that you formalize that position of Chief City Prosecutor. And again, it's really only turning one of the prosecutor positions into the position of Chief City Prosecutor. Thank you.
In the attempt to get the staffing ordinance correct, this is, seems like the proper method, too.
I'm all for that.
Any other questions? I have none. So, we'll bring forth an ordinance, extra review session, start a first reading. There's no need for suspension or waiving of the rules or anything. So, we'll just get to the current legislative procedure and we'll have it done. And I really don't have any miscellaneous for finance and personnel, so.
Thank you. All right, moving on to a special session of city council. There are some subtle differences this evening. President Nisley is our acting mayor. I am sitting as President Protem, and you'll, I will also be as a voting member as well. We're establishing a call-in with all members present, and thus moving on to communications, communications from council members. Councilmember Pappy, did you have a communication?
I do. And I'm glad we have so many, hopefully, maybe renters out there in the audience. I want to make an announcement to remind everybody, usually our mayor does this, but as Chair of Transportation, I thought I would do it this evening, because we have many pedestrians in this community. We really, really need you to clear your sidewalks. There's just, I, I can't say. I got a phone call from a mother today, and her daughter had fallen twice on her way home from school on ice, and the only other option is to walk in the street. So, our code office has reef, I guess, reinvigorated their efforts to be out there trying to encourage people to clear their sidewalks. And I just wanted to remind everyone that at the end of a snowfall, if it stops snowing at 2:00 in the afternoon, you have four hours to clean your sidewalks. At that point, you can be cited for failure to clear your sidewalks. So, we are asking everyone to do that. And many people, especially in the closer in neighborhoods, State Street area, Morris, North Congress, some of the West Side, High Street, a lot of people walk to the uptown area, and they have to traverse across some very icy conditions. So, I just want to remind everybody that our code crew is out there, and they are specifically focusing on safe routes to schools areas so, this week. So, please, please clear your sidewalks. It's an issue for people with disabilities. It's an issue for the elderly, for the young. It's an issue for everybody. And if you want your mail, it's an issue for your mail to be delivered. Our mail carriers are out there trying to deliver mail on very, in very icy conditions. So, we thank you for your efforts and businesses as well.
Thank you. Any other announcements, Councilmember Patterson?
Thank you, Mr. President Protem. This is a, also a reminder of sorts, kind of a spring break reminder for all the students who are going to sunnier, warmer climates. I'm staying here. But anyway, you know, not to forget to, that you can't leave trash out on your curbs when you leave to go away on spring break. You certainly can't leave your trash containers, even if they're empty, or recycling containers out on the curb, not have them returned. Or if that is the case, at least make sure you've got a neighbor, friend, that is willing to bring those trash receptacles and recycling bins back up off the curb and put in front of your house. And that said, I kind of want to dovetail on what Member Pappy was just talking about with snow removal. Even though it's not in this reminder, it's something I do want to state is that, this has happened last year. If you do go away on spring break, please make sure that you reach out to a friend, a neighbor, or maybe even your landlord. Granted, your landlord lives in the city, to make sure that you have snow removal clearance while you're away as well. Last year, it was really kind of rough, because we did have a large snowstorm over, over spring break. And I know there's a lot of residences in the city that were left uncleared the entire week. So, I just wanted to make sure that was reiterated as a reminder for trash receptacles and snow removal when people are out of town.
Thank you. Very relevant points. Anyone else on council wishing to offer some communications? Moving on to the mayor's office, Acting Mayor Nisley.
Thank you. I have five items, and I will try and be brief. We have received a number of communications from citizens in the city concerning the liquor, liquor permit for Kroger's. And as Councilmember Pappy learned from the corporate office, this is intended for wine tasting, and they will be monitoring the situation closely. But the city does have a corporate contact person available. So, if other people wanted to respond to Kroger's to let them know they're concerned, that's one avenue, since we are past our official city capacity at the deadline of January 29th to respond in any formal way from city council. And I think that's what some of the citizens are questioning. We've received correspondence on another topic. This is an earlier ordinance that we passed, and we've received correspondence from Ohio Attorney General Mike DeWine, giving us for contacting us about our, the marriage equality, and so acknowledging that earlier ordinance or resolution that we passed. One of these, another item, housekeeping item, has to do with the East Union Street closure between Court and College. That'll be tomorrow from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Just so folks are aware of it and try and stay, stay clear of the area. I wanted to note that council members are in receipt of the treasurer's report from Mary Ann McClure. The one note that I might say is, is that our earnings for the end of 2014 were significantly less than the original projections, but this was due to lower interest rates. And from my understanding, there, there, you know, there'll be work...
And from my understanding, there'll be work on the projections for this coming year. And we've had a query, I think, from Councilmember Pappy, perhaps about some persons soliciting in the city, and we did want to make a clarification of that. And I know that you've been talking with the Code Director, John Tatchey, so I thought maybe you might be able to give us an update on that.
It turns out that those coming into the city to peddle or seek out, they're not selling something specifically. They're seeking information and attempting to get people to buy into a gas or an electric program. My understanding from over the weekend that a couple individuals were rather aggressive in terms of their sales tactics. It is not permitted, they did indeed show up at City Hall, and we sent them to Code. They're not issued a permit, but they take copies of their ID. They write down the company that they're working for. They have the company contact information. So, if people feel they've been adversely impacted, they can contact the Code Office. And I always state, if anybody feels threatened, they should contact Athens Police Department and they could come out. So, it's not activities that are prohibited under our current code.
But they do ask for information. They want to see your utility bill, and we would just warn everybody that that has your address on it. They usually want to see your utility bill because they want to see your kilowatt-hours and those kind of things, what your current rate is. But again, in no way, shape, or form, I mean, you really need to think about showing that information to an individual, even if they have a badge, whoever they're working for. So, it is a concern.
Yeah, because one thing to look for, too, is your ID number that's on that bill. And once they get that ID number, they can have your service switched under them. Because we, I was having a person being that aggressive to me, and I asked him, why are you needing this bill? Why are you wanting this number? And come to find out, once they get the number, it's easier for them to transfer your service later. So, you don't let them see your bills. Don't let them get that number.
And I don't want to speak for the Law Director, but I mean, it's the old caveat emptor, right? I mean, buyer beware.
Yep.
Careful.
I do have one more piece of information that we received from the Army Corps of Engineers, and it's a notice of permit authorization. And I'll bring it up because we have been involved with ordinances aimed at protecting our water supply. But the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers approved the permit request by Green Hunter Water to construct, operate, and maintain a barge offloading facility along the right descending bank of the Ohio River. So, that's dated February 11th.
And that's the barge terminal down in Portland, Iowa?
Yes, Portland. Portland, Megs County, so adjacent county.
Thank you. Acting Mayor.
Duck place of the universe.
Acting Law Director Eliasen, any comments or communications for us this evening?
No, thank you.
Okay. We do have the autograph present as well this evening. Any comments, communications? Thank you. Moving on to ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 0215. An ordinance--
Correct. Ordinance for third reading?
Ordinance 0215, an ordinance declaring a rural transit bus no longer needed for a municipal purpose, and this is introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. Member Reisner wants to buy the bus. No. This ordinance is declaring rural transit no longer needed for municipal purpose. We've discussed this at length. It is no longer in any usable fashion.
Move to adopt.
And we move to adopt this ordinance, 0215.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of passing the ordinance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 0515, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 11, Business Regulations, Chapter 11.08, Taxi Cabs, introduced by Councilmember Paul.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt 0515.
Second.
We've talked about this many times for it being a kind of housekeeping definitional change. This will help close some loopholes in the definition of taxi cabs and who needs licenses to address certain things such as trucks driving around, sort of things. So, make it cleaner, more straightforward.
Thank you, Councilmember Paul. Any questions or comments? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adopting the ordinance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance has been adopted. Moving on to ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 0115, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of two replacement buses for the Athens Transit System, and this is introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
I do want to say one thing in response to Member Canterbury. So, that would give us just a few weeks to get that information because we will go--
One week.
Well, one week, right, because we'll have a session next week. So, okay. Thank you.
That's also going to include the new buses getting rid of the one that goes with the lowrider. Is that the one they're going to do?
Right. And I guess I need to bring up the, don't I need to? I'm sorry. I do need to do that. Okay, so we talked about, I move to amend ordinance 0115.
Second.
And the reason for amending is we had to relook at the totals, and so, as I said before, the total is now $40,803.
That's being appropriated.
That's what's being appropriated. And the total cost is $172,803. City's local share, $34,561.
Can you please repeat the city share again? Thank you.
$34,561.
Thank you. So, I have a motion to amend and a second. We have, I think we already have the second correct.
Yeah.
So, all those in favor of amending the ordinance only, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance has been amended and read for the first time.
So, I got another week.
So, we have a little more time.
Okay. Moving on to ordinance 0615, an ordinance providing for the issuance of $70,000 of notes by the City of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of renewing notes issued for the purpose of paying part of the costs of acquiring and installing energy conservation improvements at the city's recreation center and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Mr. President Pro Tem. I move to suspend the rules for this ordinance.
Second.
The reason for the suspension of the rules is that this is an overdue payment. And, you know, it's from last year, so we have to clear this out, get our books in order. So, that's the reason why.
Thank you, Councilmember Reisner. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules, and we're voting on suspension only here. And this is ordinance 0615. All those in favor of suspension, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is under suspension of the rules.
I move to adopt ordinance 0615.
Second.
And again, for the reasons are still the same for the suspension is that this is a bill that needs to be paid, and we need to get our books cleared for the new year.
Thank you, Councilmember Reisner. Are there any comments before we move to vote?
Say comments?
Any comments before we move to vote?
This is for the payment on the debt for the improvements that's due this February 27th. So, that's just a clarification.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. So, a motion to adopt and a second. All those in favor of adopting the ordinance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance has been adopted. Moving on to ordinance 0815, an ordinance amending the 2014 appropriation ordinance, and this is introduced by Councilmember Patterson.
Mr. President Pro Tem, I want to make a motion to amend ordinance 08-15.
Second.
Thank you. This amendment is to include an additional $10,000. It will go towards the two roughly 110-square-foot panels on the primary clarifiers down at the wastewater treatment plant, which would change the ordinance to $21,000 coming out of the Athens Enhancement Fund 250 TC 300.
Thank you. Good question. Just to make this clear in my head, we are voting to amend the ordinance that will amend the appropriations. Is that, okay.
And these are clarifiers for the new and improved or the old?
Oh, no. This is for the new.
This is the new and improved.
There's two large blank canvases, concrete panels on the primary clarifiers that are surrounded by the stamped stone-looking concrete work designed for this project.
Thank you, Councilmember Patterson. We have a motion. I'm sorry.
Acting President, pardon, Mayor.
I did just have one question that I did go back and check because I was unsure in my mind whether it was $10,000 or $15,000, but we're going with the $10,000.
Service Safety Director, you look like you have a comment.
I did reach out to AMACers. They're a wonderful group, you know, our commission for Athens Municipal Arts. And I think we landed on language up to $15,000 if that, from the same fund, the Athens Enhancement, to kind of allow whether or not we wind up providing materials or not. And it was based on math, believe it or not, on what was used at the tunnel and the expense and the same square footage. Just might be a little more challenging to reach that rather than painting in a tunnel, although I would say that was rather challenging as well.
Thank you.
So, is the conversation then to amend, amend the amendment?
Well, can we go with 10, and then if we need more later or not?
Well, it's easier to do up to and hope it comes in at 10.
They'll never go.
That is the easier way. Oftentimes, we find that when we pigeonhole to $6,788 that we wind up coming back for $2.25. But I know that that's simplistic. But I'm sure AMAC would try to work with whatever parameters you provide.
Okay, so to clarify things, what then is the language of the amendment that we're going to vote on? Is it $10,000 or up to $15,000?
I believe that it should be up to $15,000 because I do, I am aware of AMAC's estimate that what they were, what they did put into the tunnel, which is 300 square foot of space, I believe, was $15,000 that went into that. And we're talking about two large panels that are going to need scaffolding and so and so forth. There's a lot of extra supplies that are going to go into those two projects.
Okay.
So, amend to be up to $15,000 for the primary clarifiers.
So, we have a motion with the new numbers, with up to 15. Thank you. Okay. Motion and a second, and this is amending the ordinance only. All those in favor of amending, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance has been amended and read for the first time. Moving on to ordinance 09-15, an ordinance determining to proceed with replacement of existing sidewalk improvements associated with the West Union Street Infrastructure Improvements Project, and that is number 280, as described in Resolution R 09-14 and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Pappy. That's just second reading. Any comments? Ordinance 10-15, an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street from Union to State on Saturday, April 18th, 2015, from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. for the International Street Fair. This is introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Let it stand at this point.
Was that? No question?
Let it stand at this point.
Okay. Moving on to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 12-15, an ordinance creating a local historic district to include certain buildings on West Union Street. This is introduced by Councilmember Paul.
Thank you, Mr. President. We, Paul O came by and presented this to us a couple weeks ago. Basically, we would like to go forward to establishing this historic district specifically identified by the Union Street buyer victim buildings. Basically, it's 14, 16, 18, and 22 West Union. This will help enable owners, when they're redeveloping, to qualify for certain types of tax credits and/or grants. And with that, there is a requirement for a public hearing, which will be March 16th, 2015, Monday, right before the meeting at 7:00 in this room. So, if you're interested in testifying or making comments, that's an opportunity to do that. And we will move forward.
What was the date again?
March 16th, 7:00 p.m. in this room.
Public hearing?
Public hearing.
Thank you, Councilmember Paul. Any questions and comments on first reading? Ordinance 13-15, an ordinance authorizing the payment of a prior year expense and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
I move to suspend the rules again.
Second.
The reason for the suspension is this is a prior year's expense that needs to be paid.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on suspension only. All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 13-15, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is now under suspension of the rules.
I move to adopt ordinance 13-15.
Second.
It's short here, so I'll read it. An ordinance authorizing the payment of prior year's expense and declaring an emergency, be it ordained at the Council of the City of Athens, Ohio, Section 1. The Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to expend up to $6,670.38 for the sewer plant fund 750.637 TC 200 to pay your bill to American Electric Power. And that's it in that show.
Thank you. Any comments from the Mayor's Office?
If I may.
Sure.
We were implying that electric costs at the wastewater treatment plant were expensive, and we had to move some money in last year. Just didn't quite move enough. So, that's why we're asking to pay this.
Thank you. We have a motion to, and a second to adopt ordinance 13-15. All those in favor of adopting the ordinance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance has been adopted. Moving on to ordinance 14-15, an ordinance affirming the Mayor's execution of an agreement with the Board of Athens County Commissioners for the purpose of obtaining the services of the Public Defender's Office for the period from July 1st, 2014, through December 31st, 2014. This is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
This type of agreement is something the city and the county goes through about every year or so. Because we have different billing cycles, the years get off, the months get off a little bit. So, that's why we have a July to December rather than a December to December. And this does not require any suspension of the rules. They can go through three readings to the normal legislative procedure. So, tonight is just a first reading.
Thank you. Any comments? Ordinance 15-15, an ordinance authorizing the Mayor to enter into an addendum agreement with the Board of Athens County Commissioners for the purpose of obtaining the services of the Public Defender's Office for the period from January 1st, 2015, through June 30th, 2015, and declaring emergency. This, too, is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
And this goes, again-- And this goes again back to the 1415. The, because of our different billing cycles, we get off, we get out of sync with the county. So we have to bring it back into a line, so we have to have an addendum to the agreement. And that's what this is. We are declaring an emergency, just so that when the mayor signs it, it becomes effective immediately. But again, there's no reason to suspend the rules tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Reisner. Any comments or questions? Ordinance 16-15, an ordinance authorizing an adjustment to the non-union pay scale. This is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee. Who would like to speak on this behalf?
I can speak to it, and if anyone else would like to join in later. Essentially, there's a long story behind this. What we're doing here with this ordinance is giving a 1% pay raise to most of the non-union employees that are under the mayor's direction. Back in December, we authorized a pay raise of 2%. And then the mayor later came, well, came to us and said that he wanted to raise 1%. Let's have some background. What happened was that back in December, the Auditor's Office decided to give their employees a pay raise of 3% and 4%. Two received 3% and the other two received 4%. The then-law director, who's now judge of the Court of Compties, Mr. Lang, wrote an opinion saying that as long as the said offices had the necessary money appropriated for their employees, then there was, it seemed to be in their jurisdiction to do so. Prior to that, it had always been the tradition that it was council who raised wages and salaries and that the various departments came to council to ask their permission. With this opinion that the then-law director passed, it would seem that council lost that authority. The mayor, at that point, made overtures to council, basically saying, well, since I now have the authority to raise the wages for my employees, I really don't need council's approval. I can do it on my own by fiat. I do not like that idea at all. I like the idea that a department comes to council and makes a request, and then council approves that. So what we have here is not an argument, do the non-union pay people deserve an extra 1%? Yes, they do deserve it. Anybody who saw the street crews out during the snow and watched them repair water breaks, when the water temperature in the hole is 40 degrees, the air temperature is minus 15, would say, yes, I think they do deserve an extra 1%. So that's not the issue. The issue to me, frankly, is more of a, I hate to use the word constitutional issue, but it is. The city has its own constitution in the form of ordinances and laws. It's not written constitution, but there it is. So we have traditionally had the responsibility and the power to raise or not, or to approve salary increases. So I'm bringing this thing, this ordinance forward in the constitutional sense that council still retains that power. We still have it. So I am bringing this up for council vote. It will take three readings. There is no retroactive pay involved in this at all. It's just a simple 1% becoming effective at the earliest moment permitted by law upon passage and approval by the mayor, which would probably be sometime in April, given our schedule right now for, because the full three readings. And then the pay cycle, of course, kicks in. So that's where I come from on this. That's my stand, that if council does not exercise its power, it loses it. If we aggregate our power over to the various departments, essentially, council just becomes irrelevant. There's no point in coming here. If council doesn't control the purse strings, then who does? Now, council, the members of council, the seven of us here, we have the opportunity to vote yes and approve this, approve the 1%. Give the mayor his approval. That is asserting our power. The converse is, we can deny that. We can say no. We can disapprove. Council can do that, yet we are still exercising our authority and our power. And I think we need to keep that. So that's why I brought this forward. This is just the first reading, the second, the third, and that's all I have about it.
Thank you, Member Reisner. Any questions or comments?
Thank you for your excellent presentation on that, Councilmember Reisner, but I, too, have questions on it. And one of them is, is that you alluded to the fact that we used to have the power and then we didn't, and this gives us the chance to take that power back. I guess two things I would like is that, number one, since Law Director Lang gave an opinion that an elected official did have the power to grant raises if the budget was approved, and which this council has already approved the 2015 budget. So we're in it therefore, allows the mayor or whomever to give raises as they see, if it's in their budget. Number two, I'd like to ask the council, ask the law director for an opinion to either, number one, if it coincides with Law Director Lang's previous comment on the pay raise. And number three, if council should either, number one, approve this for the second reading, the third reading, or whenever it does, or that they do create an ordinance, that they do take the power back for the next year. Because I think it's already been done, and not that I have a problem, I think they do deserve raises. But again, I think the mayor already has the authority to do that if it's within his budget, according to Law Director Lang's previous ruling.
I'd like to point out, in the past, council, the law director is an advise and consent. And sometimes, they provide information and their opinion. And sometimes, council in the past, and before I was on it and such, they have chosen to, you know, go and establish different precedents and such. So it's not like a Supreme Court ruling where it comes down. It's an opinion. So I think that what we're trying to do is to establish a precedence, establish a process, reestablish precedence, however you want to define it. And then we can move on from there, because I think that this kind of has bogged down the council and administration, and it's some, a point that we can say, let's go, and move on to the future and getting back to being able to do the business of the city.
And again, I think you bring up the next important, Councilmember Paul. However, the law director is our attorney. And if there's ever a lawsuit, I'm not going to be on the no end of that. I'm going to be on siding with what the law director has stated. She is our attorney. And that's the reason I brought that up.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I would just add that I feel uncomfortable with this ordinance. I don't begrudge anyone a raise. Our city employees are obviously a hard-working bunch, but I do feel uncomfortable with the fact that this has become a tit-for-tat. We wouldn't be sitting here talking about this if it weren't for four employees who got what I perceive to be merit-based pay raises. And we don't seem to have any merit-based pay raise system in place for the entire city. And I see that as a major management and personnel issue that needs to be resolved before I feel comfortable supporting this ordinance. And, you know, the mayor has vociferously told us that he can do this without us. And so I'm just voicing my discomfort at this point with the situation and with the ordinance.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I support what Member Cochran said.
Thank you.
Now, let me just sum up again that it doesn't matter which way a council member votes on this, either way, you're asserting your authority. That's the point.
Thank you. No further comments? Moving on to ordinance 17-15, an ordinance amending ordinance 0-99-14, establishing fees as required by the Athens City Code. And this is introduced by all councilmembers. Who this evening will be speaking?
Who wants to talk about, oh, my God, I will.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Paul.
Thank you, I will talk about raising parking fees. Oh, this is, okay. This isn't parking fees. This is the other fee. Okay, somebody else, you can do the parking fees. Okay. This is to amend Section 29.3404. It's doing citations. So basically, this is a housekeeping, because we've done other things in the past. So basically, it's taking out Title 31, it's striking Section 31.08.12 plumbing permits required, and it has a fee, a schedule of the fees. And it's removing that to make the, this particular code read like other code that we had passed in the past. So everything makes sense and coordinates.
Thank you, Councilmember Paul. Any other questions regarding ordinance 1715? Any comments? Ordinance 1815, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to submit an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, for a federal highway administration small cities program grant and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. We discussed this at committee, and this allows us to move forward with the funding to look at planning for the Simpson Avenue corridor. And we need to suspend. Thank you.
Second.
Any other questions? Everyone online with what we're doing here?
And if you could offer a quick reminder as to why we're suspending?
So this would allow us to apply for a grant, a small cities grant, for the Simpson corridor, Simpson corridor improvements. We're looking at improving that whole corridor.
And a March 1 deadline.
March 1 deadline. Sorry.
Not so bad. We have a, on suspension only, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of suspending the rules for ordinance 18-15, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is now under suspension.
I move to adopt 1815.
Back up.
Because of the May 1, 2015 deadline.
Super. Thank you. Any comments as well?
Is any city money matching to that, or is it just all grant money?
There's always a matching.
If I may, this is just our first step. Council passed a similar ordinance when we started the funding process for Richland South, the improvements. So I do not have a copy of the application. They're madly putting it together. It is indeed due. It may be due Monday, but either way, we do need it suspended if we want it included in the packet. What this truly shows, it's actually not a requirement of the application, it truly shows the commitment of the city to move forward in planning this process. And so it has that sort of effect when it's submitted with the applications.
And there's also a building block aspect here because
Right.
ODOT is also looking at improving the highway corridor there and the off-ramp coming off of 33 and 50 across the river. And so there's a whole plan in order, and as we stack it all up with the grant system and ODOT funding, it's good to be moving and planning, because this doesn't even begin to, I think it was 2017?
I would say that's aggressive. I think we're going to look more like a 2018.
Yeah, we're several years off here.
And just like with Richland South, we package, so some might be 75-25, some might be 80-20. But I can get you a copy of the application.
I just want to make sure the Shibi is not getting, before the cart, that we put ourselves in a financial bind.
This is not appropriating any money at this time. And again, do it happen?
Yep. One does not have to accept a grant if one is, but we would never do that because it would be really dumb. But it's not appropriating or promising anything.
Yeah, just a concern.
Sure. Thanks. Any other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 1815, 18-15. All those in favor of adopting the ordinance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance has been adopted. Moving on to ordinance 19-15, an ordinance accepting the Ohio Department of Transportation's pre-qualified consultant list for ODOT-funded projects. This, too, is introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. Regarding this ordinance, ODOT encourages grant applicants to have a list of people who will complete projects and people who are allowed to submit for projects. So we, our engineering and public works department has indicated that this also is an important piece for ODOT qualifying, pre-qualifying for ODOT grant money. So we've gone ahead and done that. And it is a list of firms, professional engineering, environmental, and right-of-way services that have been reviewed and approved and qualified for each category of service. And I don't, I think we can, first reading is fine. Yes, I'm sorry, Member Patterson.
This pre-qualified consultant list essentially speeds up the process because it's firms that have been vetted already.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Pappy. Thank you, Councilmember Patterson. Any other comments? Ordinance 20-15, an ordinance amending ordinances 74-01 and 52-07, Athens City Code, Title 7, Parking Regulations, Chapter 7.05.26, Regulation of City Parking Lots. This, again, is introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
So this ordinance, we're putting into effect in, as a precursor to our funding for the improvements in our city parking garage. And effective May 1, 2015, it will cost 75 cents per hour, or 20 cents, I'm sorry, or 20, yes, 25 cents for 20 minutes. So that is an increase overall per hour of 25 cents, correct? Aren't we at 50 cents now?
Yes.
The other important piece to this is that reserve spacing will be restricted to levels lower B, upper B, and lower 1 only, except for elected officials, employees of the City of Athens who primary duty work site is the City Hall, City Hall Annex. The city parking garage or a downtown office leased by the city may park on Level 3 or above without charge in the city parking garage during official work time only. This privilege applies only to permanent employees and does not apply to vehicles operated by other than city employees.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Comments?
Just a comment. Again, this was, this piece of legislation, when it moves forward, it's just one more piece in a puzzle to, to help finance the, our aging parking garage, which is in, which is our next ordinance. It's going to be, again, this is, this is much needed. This is something that hasn't changed since the 1980s in terms of the fees for the metered parking spaces, as well as the leases, I imagine, have been quite a while, too, since they have changed.
I think the other thing, administration, we are looking at actually changing the meters... I think the other thing, administration, we are looking at actually changing the meters as well, that's another, are we looking at doing the swipes? Possibly.
Yes, we would like to get an upgraded system in the garage, but my understanding is that you will be revisiting the street meter charges as well.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Let me interject that if we do revisit the street meters, that money does not go to the fund that funds the parking garage, that goes to the general fund, which then is spent how the administration, how other, how the departments feel that needs to be spent. What we're doing here with this ordinance, as introduced by Councilmember Pappy, is trying to raise enough revenue ahead of any bond or loan that's, we're going to be required to finance the restoration and rehabilitation of the garage. This will just give us a little bit of money ahead of the game, before we actually had to get a contract out and start spending money. So hopefully, it'll help.
Thank you. Ordinance twenty-one fifteen. An ordinance authorizing improvements to the municipal parking facility, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
So again, I know Finance Committee has been meeting with Bond Council and crunching the numbers in terms of how to finance the improvements to the municipal parking garage. So the ordinance we just heard is a piece to that. The service safety director is hereby authorized in this ordinance. And I believe, do we need to suspend this, or are we on our timeline with the engineering firm and construction schedule?
Bridges and Nible, our design engineering firm, has indicated that if it is suspended at second reading, meaning next Monday, that we're just a two-week delay built into the project. I must, and maybe I don't believe I'm privy to all the conversations regarding the financing of it, but it does say that this would authorize the service safety director to expend up to the $2 million when funds are available. So I'm, I'm just not sure yet that we've reached a point where the financing has been vetted thoroughly.
You're probably correct.
Okay.
In that, yes. We're still crunching the numbers, we're still looking at the parking fees, if moving personnel around from one fund to another will help. We're looking at different sources. I think the overriding concern here is public safety. The garage needs to be repaired. No ifs, ands, or buts about it. I think that needs to be the driving force and thought behind this. It must be done, it must not be delayed. It is starting to crumble. It has, it has problems. And the last thing we need is someone getting hit by a piece of cement falling off the ceiling, especially me, I would not like that. So I want to get this thing done. And I know if we're creative, we'll find the money.
And I also believe to add to what you're saying, Member Reisner, is that in terms of a construction cycle, that's why we're moving forward on this, because we know that in order to have the elevators prepared, that's, you know, ten months out, or however long it takes to construct the elevator and repair that. And then all of these things have to mesh together in terms of the construction cycle. So we are moving somewhat quickly here, but we do believe, and I do believe, that the numbers are being crunched. Member Patterson?
I want to echo what you just mentioned, actually what you and Member Reisner both mentioned. My theory, too, is that someone could get killed, you know, if a big chunk of concrete falls, especially from the fifth or sixth deck. But equally important is there is a tight time schedule for having this take place. If that slips, for whatever reason, because we haven't gotten our ducks in a row, it could mean a delay of another year, another winter season, before we can get to this, and most importantly, a rise in the costs that are going to be associated with that, because we're going to see a three percent at least increase in the cost. So we're going to be looking at, you know, a three-point, or a two-point-three, as opposed to what we're looking at right now. So I do feel strongly about being able to push this forward.
I just want to add one other thing. There were a couple of comments made about cement falling off. In no way, shape, or form has the engineering firm suggested that that's going to happen next week. That's going to happen in several years if we do not follow up and do these improvements now. So that's why we're moving forward in this. We don't want to go through another winter cycle, but it's not in disrepair at this point. We just need to stay on a construction cycle and a repair cycle quickly.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other comments?
I did forget to mention the total, which is the service safety director is hereby authorized to expend up to $2 million. So I just want to put that out there.
And that's for the garage itself and the elevators, which is a chunk of change to get the elevators, which have probably antique motors with them.
That's what the engineering firm told us.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Moving on to resolution for first reading. Resolution R zero-four dash fifteen. A resolution to appropriate property for standard highway easements and temporary construction easements owned by Athens Health Realty LLC on Columbus Circle pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Sections seven-one-nine point zero-four and seven-one-nine point zero-five and Chapter one sixty-three, introduced by all members of council. Who will be speaking on this?
I will begin speaking on this.
And my understanding is that likely needs to do a suspension, is that correct?
Yes, we need to do a suspension. So I...
Or can we, can we suspend it next week?
No, I think we need to...
It's a resolution.
It's a resolution.
It's a resolution.
Is it a one reading or a three reading?
So I move to suspend.
Sorry.
The reason for the suspension is, we discussed this at some length before, we are right at the end of our funding cycle with the grants, and if we don't get moving on this, we're going to lose the grant money for the Columbus Road Bike Spur. I will just, this is very technical, but there is a small parcel at the Athens Health Realty property, which is the Laurel's, if anyone's knowledgeable about that. And we, in order to perform the work necessary, we need to pass this resolution. I think that's the, the fair market value of the property and the rights title interest in estates therein and the structures of any situated therein to be appropriated, together with damages of any to the residue thereof, has been determined to be parcel two T one and parcel two T two, temporary construction easements, one hundred and seventy thousand in parcel two S H dash one and parcel two S H two, standard highway easements, twenty-four five five eight is described in the attached exhibit. Hundred and seventy thousand.
No, that's a hundred and seventy.
Oh, a hundred and seventy dollars?
For the, is that, I'm reading that right?
Are we reading this right?
Because it's a temporary construction easement, so they're putting some barrels.
I'll just see if there's anything else. Are there any other questions on this from council members regarding the specifics?
And the city is still in negotiation with, and you hope to come to a conclusion without having to go through this process? Is that what we talked about during committee?
It is. We're asking, we're seeking this, the actual law in order to be able to file in court, which first date would be?
There are two parcels.
The hundred and seventy dollars and the other parcel for twenty-four thousand five fifty-eight.
There are actually two temporary construction easements and then two standard highway easements. The two temporary construction easements are a hundred and seventy dollars, and then the standard highway easements are twenty-four thousand, twenty-four thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
A piece or for both?
For both.
Then a hundred and seventy, same way, for both, not just?
Yeah, they combined.
Not, not?
Member Cochran?
I would just point out that it would be helpful if we had a map so folks could see where this is. But just for clarification, we're talking about a very small area. I just think it's important to clarify that, because when you talk about things like eminent domain, that sounds scary, it sounds confrontational. But we're just talking about putting a bike path extension that's going to have a very small footprint on this, this area. We're not, you know, taking anybody's building, we're not taking anybody's sidewalk, there's nothing on this piece, correct me if I'm wrong. It's a grassy area, basically flood plain right beside the Hocking River, so...
It's in the flood plain.
Very, very small footprint.
I mean, it's, it's a limited development. That's why it's distressing that the Laurel's hasn't come forward. You know, it probably has more to do with corporate gears that have to run with them, but I would hope the cooperation, because it would probably benefit them, too.
Any other comments before we move on suspension? So we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of Resolution zero-four dash fifteen. All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The rules have been suspended.
I move to adopt Resolution zero-four fifteen.
Second.
Any other comments before we move to vote? We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance, sorry, resolution, zero-four dash fifteen. All those in favor of accepting the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The resolution has been accepted. Moving on to announcements and other business. Is there a motion to accept the auditor's financial reports from 2015?
I so moved, second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the auditor's financial reports. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The financial reports have been adopted. We also have a motion to approve attendance at our hometown Hero's Breakfast, and perhaps it might also be beneficial for a super short description, so people know what we're talking about. We have a motion and a second, and we'll have a discussion.
And I could offer some information.
Thank you.
The Public Safety Award this year at the Hero's Breakfast goes to the first responders and supporting agencies involved in the Union Street Fire. And so because of that, in part, we are wanting to follow the correct procedure, as advised by the auditor's office, to make sure that those who are attending, whose attendance there would be paid by city funds, that we, what we need to do is have a motion from city council with a list. And we do have a list that the clerk of council has, there are approximately 24 persons attending from city.
This is a Red Cross fundraiser, the, isn't that generally, yes, the breakfast?
It is. There's several categories as well, there's a number of people being honored on that morning. I believe the, the, the cost is twenty-five or thirty-five dollars, it's not two...
Twenty.
Twenty dollars.
Twenty a person.
Twenty a person.
We do have a motion, was there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a bunch of seconds. All those in favor of approving the attendance at the Hometown Hero's Breakfast, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The motion has been approved. I am now looking at, motioning for us to adjourn from the meeting. We're at the end of our, I don't know if we, it wasn't initially, it wasn't initially on the agenda, but, is there a motion then to adjourn from the meeting at eight forty-five? All those in favor, adjourn? Seven, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.